Oh, this peripheral neuropathy is watch your blood sugar. If you're diabetic, that's a sure sign that you're probably going to come down with some kind of peripheral neuropathy in the future. So these are the things you want to watch is the blood sugar. You want to watch your anti-inflammatory foods. Now, go get this checked out by a professional. Maybe it is in your feet, but the most likely problem is it is not. It's more likely a brain problem or more likely a blood sugar or metabolic problem. If you can't get these conditions checked out and get them taken care of by these professionals, some of these other therapies can help like brain-based therapy or metabolic nutrition. I'm going to urge you to take care of these blood sugar problems. All senior citizens seem to experience them, but you could take care of it a lot better if you catch it before it becomes a diabetes kind of problem.
We are continuing our conversations today with the Wise &amp; Healthy Aging Center here in Santa Monica, and I'd like to introduce you to Eric Engel, an attorney at law who is also a vice chair of the Mar Vista Wise Connections, correct?
Correct.
Great, Eric, welcome, welcome. Thank you for making time for us today. How do you see your function in this? This is kind of a startup program and new, so you're inventing this as you go?
Yes, we are. We're using a village model that was started with Beacon Hill area in Boston, but we are certainly innovating as we go to develop our systems, and it takes a lot of resources, essentially the community. It's a very grassroots sort of oriented proposition, and we've also been fortunate enough to have the resources of Wise &amp; Healthy Aging in Santa Monica to help us with a lot of the administrative aspects.
Yeah, go to the experts in the field. Boy, I sure had to discover that. Even though there's this big bubble of baby boomers coming into the aging population, the truth is these issues with seniors and the services they need have been with us for a long, long time. Some of the things that you're able to help with and coordinate with when someone is approached about an investment opportunity to kind of give wise counsel, if you will?
Yes, we're actually set up around a one-call-does-it-all kind of concept that we have a single phone number that a member can call for whatever resources they need, whether it's sitting in to listen to a financial investment pitch if they've been approached, for example, or to connect them with an advisory service where they can get, you know, independent consultations about whether this is a good idea or not. For example, Wise &amp; Healthy Aging has a reverse mortgage program, for example. That's a common situation. We could connect people with that, of course. And often people just seem to want, you know, a neutral ear, somebody to sit in and listen and be able to talk to them separately about whether this is a program they might want to get involved in or not. We don't give investment advice per se. That's not the concept, but we would connect them with people who can help them through the situation.
Well, on the issue of finding qualified or being able to recommend qualified vendors, that is a critical issue because seniors often through their own naivete can lose their homes with these mechanic leans. And I understand you're in the process of actually qualifying vendors now, whether it's a plumber or contractor?
That's correct. We've gotten our first applications in and our startup program from the vendors, and a lot of them are contractors, electricians and plumbers and so forth, handymen even. And that process is very important. There are a lot of records that are available. We have the resources to investigate, you know, the contractors that, you know, seniors may not always think to go and investigate. And it is very important because seniors can get themselves in a lot of trouble very quickly with a bad contractor.
Well, I know one of the things I like to explain to family members, caregivers, is that you can save yourself a lot of grief if you have a single resource, a place to call, just to make sure you're making the right decisions on behalf of your parents. I love the fact that with Wise &amp; Healthy Aging, it's a membership program, and you can actually purchase a membership for mom and dad just to protect them.
That's correct, and the idea is, you know, we're there to support the caregivers as well as the seniors who are getting the direct service, but the caregivers may well want to call us as well for, you know, telling us there's an issue that we may want to address. And, you know, we can contact their members and talk to them about that.
Right. Especially when you get to end-of-life issues. I know for me, having a fair witness come and sort of manage a family discussion so that we have no hard feelings, these are the facts, these are the issues you're going to be facing now, how will we address that? That's very important.
Right, and that's part of the one-call-does-it-all kind of service that we can send volunteers, qualified social workers, whatever is needed for the situation to just attend and help facilitate whatever is going on. We held small sessions with, you know, people in the early stages of developing the program, you know, small group discussions, and we're continuing to hold living room sessions on those now. And one of the things that struck me in the course of the discussions was that people often just want somebody there for a small event, even as small as, you know, I want to climb a ladder to change a light bulb. I really prefer to have somebody there to make sure nothing goes wrong.
That's right. Well, it's hard to give up those household chores that we took for granted when we were young, I mean, cleaning the rain gutters, for example. How many times do you have to see in a newspaper the elderly man up on his roof who, you know, sadly has a fatal fall? And just some, even if it's someone to say, no, that's not a good idea, or to hold the ladder.
Right, right.
Now, feedback, we were talking earlier before we sat down today about the feedbacks that members and participants are going to be asked to actively give their impressions of vendors and the services offered?
Yes, that's a very important part of it is we intend to call the members after the service is provided, make sure it was completed to their satisfaction, and ask them for general feedback of how well the vendor provided the services, is there anything that needs to be followed up, and to act as an intermediary if there is any issue with the vendor to find out what exactly it is. Maybe it's just a follow-up call, or maybe there's a real problem and we need to address that with the vendor.
Eric, thank you so much for coming and joining us today and explaining a little bit more about the program Wise &amp; Healthy Aging. We'll be back.
Cooking? Washing greasy food byproducts down the sink? Yes? Do you like clogged and blocked sewer lines that might cause a spill in your street or home? No? Well, neither do we. So please use paper towels to wipe oils and grease from your cooking utensils and throw away all the greasy items into the trash can. Doing so will help prevent grease blockages and keep the sewage where it belongs, in the pipes, and help us protect the environment and you.
Really like...
An emergency can happen at any time. That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, get out of there!
Get the message? Be prepared.
Get out of the house!
And now it's time for another new segment of our Aging in L.A. show, Caregivers' Corner.
As a family caregiver, one of the biggest challenges is learning to manage our stress. Stress is what happens when we are overwhelmed, having more to do than what we can handle. And so we need to find a way to manage stress, but oftentimes that's easier said than done, isn't it? So let me tell you a little bit about how you can work on it. First, you need to recognize it. Try and figure out what is it that sets you off? What is it that starts to raise your stress level? What are some of the signs that the stress is coming in? Is it because you feel more irritable, because you cry a little easier, you snap at people, or you withdraw? You need to recognize the symptoms so that then you can start taking some steps towards correcting it. Identify the sources of your stress. Is it that you feel you have too much to do? Perhaps you need to delegate some of those tasks? Perhaps you're not getting enough sleep? Perhaps you just feel you're not being understood? Or sometimes it's when you have to answer that same repeated question several times again. So how can you handle it? How can you reduce your stress levels? Think about things that you can do easily, like stepping out of the room, taking some deep breaths, just to catch yourself, collect yourself again, get some oxygen back into your blood, which goes into your brain and helps you calm down, perhaps even take a short little walk outside. Find ways that you can try to reduce your stress. Determine what you can and cannot change. Those things that you cannot change, you need to then find a different way to cope with them. But the things that you can change, even the smallest change can make a big difference. You need to take action. If you identify that you need help and you don't take any action, that can be very detrimental to your health, your mental health, emotional, and physical. So make sure that you start to size up what and how you can make some changes that will improve the situation in caregiving. On the other hand, failure to take action can have all kinds of side effects too. It can bring on depression. It can affect your relationships, not only with the care receiver, but with the entire family. It can be very detrimental to your health. As we say, your mental, emotional, and physical well-being are very important. You may want to change the situation. For example, if the care receiver is taking the medications on their own more often than they should, the situation needs to be changed by you having movement of the medications somewhere where they are not visible. That way they're out of sight, and the care receiver no longer is thinking about taking meds constantly. Another thing you may want to look at is changing the perception of how you view things. If it makes you angry that someone is asking you the same question over and over again, change your perception and understand it's the illness, it's not the person that's trying to be difficult. Change your response. Say, here's a few crackers to hold you until dinnertime. We'll be eating at 6:00. Because to say to the person, don't you remember we always eat at 6:00? That's really not helping the situation, but the way you respond to it settles things down for everybody, and it makes for better quality of life for the whole family.
Now we're going to visit with Barbara Browning, a longtime Santa Monica resident, recently retired, who now volunteers for the Wise &amp; Healthy Aging program. Welcome.
Thank you.
Now, volunteering can be very satisfying or sometimes so frustrating, but as a case manager with the local hospital here, you have seen how many needs there are with seniors.
Yes, and there definitely, there isn't a senior that doesn't have a need that I don't feel that we can address.
And that's very important, from basic transportation, how do you get the bus pass or to get to the doctor's appointment, to more serious issues like making sure the medications are appropriate.
Yes, and sometimes people just want to be checked on, daily, the security of sons and daughters, nieces and nephews that are busy.
And I'm struck by how often seniors are living alone, and they need someone to help them.
There is, and that's a choice that they've made, that they want to remain in their home, and they want to remain as independent as possible.
Well, and of course, being able to age in place in your home is a great comfort to our seniors.
Yes, it is.
Now, delivering services to the home, things like checking on, I don't know, making sure the rugs are tied down, if there are grab bars in the bathroom facilities, these are all the things that you can help with, right?
Yes, definitely, and as we go into the home, we can identify things that maybe other people might not identify.
Oh, yes, indeed, and that's important. As a person starting up a program, are you relying on the contacts you've made over all the years to go and talk to people, say, come and join us for a conversation?
Oh, definitely, and that's a good place to start because people know you, and hopefully you have a reputation that they can trust. So that's really where you have to start, and then with the contacts that they have, it will grow.
Well, and it needs to because with Wise &amp; Healthy Aging, it is a community-based program, and Santa Monica is wonderful about that because there is an existing sense of community.
Yes, it is, and people in certain neighborhoods know each other, but this also provides an opportunity that they have some privacy too, that they can manage, make a phone call, and get the needs met without contacting their neighbors or their families sometimes.
Well, I keep telling people, don't be embarrassed about asking for help. For example, having meals delivered is not a sin, it is not something to be embarrassed about, it's a service that is offered to our communities.
Yes, it definitely is, but to the older person, sometimes it's a sign to them that they can't do something. So if they can be the ones that can initiate the phone call and do it through an outside agency, it's easier for them often.
And it's important too for caregivers to have a resource so they can bounce ideas off them or express their concerns.
Yes, and older people often are more receptive to outside suggestions to those within their family.
Yeah, just none of that family baggage.
Right, exactly.
Well, of course, and what I've found too is that some of our older volunteers, who may be candidates for these kind of services, are actually quite energetic and committed to their community.
Oh, they are, and the beauty of this is that you can be a member and you can be a volunteer also.
Oh, at the same time.
So you can reach out and yet receive the services yourself.
We're going to take a look now at the Santa Monica Governing Council as they have a discussion.
Number seven on our agenda, talking about some event or a potential open house in January of next year.
Okay, what comes to mind for me right away is to have maybe posters of different villages or different aspects of the program that people could actually go around and look at, and perhaps one of us could be at each station to talk about, you know, I don't know, we can think about the content of the posters. If we plan a short piece of time for some kind of presentation, we could have a little panel of maybe three members.
You might want to have some little keynote or celeb, you know, I don't want to say a celebrity, but it could be an official, you know, someone elected official or celebrity or somebody. Might be nice to help you get some, you know, for promotions and getting some attention. I don't know who that would be.
Well, we could think about that.
Yeah.
Someone who would be...
We just don't want to have too much of a program.
Yeah.
Too much, or we could have things at different times.
I think that's a great suggestion.
And now it's time to hear from Brenda Barnett from the Department of Animal Services.
I'm here with my little friend Fiona, who is a shelter animal that I have at home with me on foster care, and foster care for adult animals is one of our newer programs. So Fiona is seven to 10 years old. She's a perfect companion for the seniors for senior program, and what's really neat about the foster program is not only is Fiona getting the home care that she deserves, but she also is gaining a little bit of weight, and I've learned some very neat things about her. She's house-trained, she likes to walk on a leash, she loves to sit on your lap. So, you know, when we have these little dogs out in foster care, we learn a lot about them that we can share with the adopters. The same thing is true for the kitties. Sometimes you'll have a kitty in the shelter who just seems like she's a little depressed, she's not paying much attention. You take one of those kitties at home, let it sit on a lap for a few days, let it get hand treats, and it's great because when they come back, then they're looking for the person to pet them. So another way that you can help with it at the shelter is to take home some of these companion animals and let them stay with you for a few days, a few weeks, or a few months, and it expands the walls of our shelter without us having to build more shelter space. So we hardly recommend, and we're looking for help with this foster care program. You can get foster animals at all the shelters. It's a program that we're rolling out. We're starting at a couple of the shelters, and then it will start in all the shelters. So this is a great supplemental way. It's also a way to take an animal home, foster it for a little while, and if you happen to fall in love with your foster, then you can go ahead and adopt it. Now, that's not going to happen for me and Fiona because I have other dogs at home, and Fiona probably wants to be the only dog in your life. So, you know, Fiona needs to go to a home where there's maybe one other dog or no dogs at all, and she'll be your best friend for life.
That's all the time we have for today's show, and I sure hope you enjoyed the new format. I'm Paul Peterson, and I hope to see you again for Aging in L.A.
Driver, over here, sir, remove your shoes. Sir, remove your shoes and stand here. You have to focus when crossing a street. Every day pedestrians are seriously injured, or even killed because they're not paying attention when they cross, or because drivers fail to yield. A pedestrian always has the right of way. Pay attention, obey the law, or deal with the consequences.
Look before you cross, cars can't see you.
G'day, Troy McCubbin from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles. And welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, October 21st, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Want to thank all of the folks who have taken time out of their day to be here in Council Chambers in Room 340 here of City Hall. We meet, as I mentioned, every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And we are here live on Channel 35 for those viewers throughout the city's cable system. We're also broadcast throughout our city's website at lacity.org, and where you can find all of our council information, as well as our committee meeting times, our agendas, and any of the supporting materials provided to council members. Want to give a special thanks to those who are here in Council Chambers with us today for our Friday presentations, which are a series of special presentations we have for notable occasions and people and organizations making a difference here in the city of Los Angeles. And we also are finally available for folks who can't watch us on TV or through the internet, through your telephone, which is at the following number. You can call in and listen to the council meetings at 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And very much appreciate you tuning in and being a part of democracy in action here in the Council Chambers. Our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. They're also posted here in our Council Chambers and in our remote chambers in Van Nuys and San Pedro City Halls. If that's closer to where you live, you can avail yourself of those facilities and not only follow the council, but also testify remotely from those two places, save yourself some traffic and reduce some pollution in the city. I want to thank those council members who are here on time today. Council Members Alacon and Cardenas, Krikorian, Corretts, Perry, Rosendahl, and Wesson. Mr. Zine and Mr. Labange are excused today. So that means we're waiting Mr. Reyes, Mr. Parks, Mr. Wiesar, and Mr. Englander. And we'll begin our presentations in just about one minute. We have eight presentations today. And we'll be beginning with Italian Heritage Month and also Domestic Violence Awareness Month will follow shortly thereafter as well. So I want to thank everybody who is here, and we'll begin the meeting in about one minute. Thank you.
I now recognize Council President Garcetti for our first presentation.
Thank you very much. Buongiorno, and it's great to be here in the City Council Chambers and on behalf of myself and Council Member Tom Labange, who is unfortunately unable to be with us today. I'm very proud to be here with the Honorable Giuseppe Perone, who is the new Council General of Italy, Paul Pagnone, our great friend and president of the Italian American Museum, Los Angeles, and of course, the one and only Mariana Gatto, the Executive Director of the Italian American Museum, Los Angeles, as we honor today Italian American Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles and recognize the contributions of Italian Americans to the city of Los Angeles, to the state of California, and to the United States. I'm very pleased that our city attorney Carmen Trutanich, you know, who sounds kind of Croatian, but it's really Italian, right?
Italian, yeah.
Okay, exactly, he's got both. It's Italo-Croatian, is joining us as well. And thank you very much, city attorney, for your leadership, as well as your cultural and family heritage, too. In April 1524, Giovanni da Verzzano, now we have a bridge named after in, of course, New York, a mariner from Florence, Italy, set foot in what is now Rhode Island. His arrival at Block Island and his observation that it was about the size of the island of Rhodes, Rhode Island, later gave Rhode Island its name. And other Italians like Amerigo Vespucci, which gave America its name, Christopher Columbus were some of the first explorers to explore the American continents and to illustrate the geography of these lands. Italians and Italian Americans have made great contributions to America's society economically, artistically, culturally, scientifically, and politically, and have won prestigious prizes such as the Nobel Prize, the Pritzker Award for Architecture, and the Fields Medal for Mathematics. The contributions are indisputable, but more than that, we've seen Italian Americans literally woven into the fabric of what is America today. Italian Americans are so much a part of that fabric, they have toiled and labored while helping to build our nation's infrastructure, including railroads and tunnels, highways and subways. And over 5.4 million Italians immigrated to the United States between 1820 and 1992, which today has resulted in over 26 million Americans of Italian descent in the United States, making them the fifth-largest ethnic group in the United States. There are little Itali's everywhere that connect with the big Italy. And the traditions of certainly Italian Americans are not just exclusively enjoyed by Italian Americans, but embraced by Americans of all ethnic backgrounds. Italian Americans have fought valiantly in the United States military service since the Revolutionary War and comprise one of the largest and most decorated ethnic groups in the United States military during World War II. Their presence in Los Angeles here began in 1827, prior to California statehood, with Giovanni Leandri, who established a business and built a home in the Pueblo, adjacent to where Union Station currently stands. The heart of Los Angeles' Little Italy was located what today is El Pueblo Historical Monument, Chinatown in Lincoln Heights. I still have constituents of mine in places like Glassell Park, grandmothers and great-grandmothers who understand a little bit of English, but still really reflect the old country and the waves of immigration that came here and those pockets that contributed so much in the northeast and central part of our city. Of course, we have the Italian American Museum, which is located in Historic Italian Hall overlooking Alvera Street. It's the oldest remaining structure from the city's Little Italy. Will reopen in 2013 to showcase the rich history of Italian Americans and Italians to visitors of all origins. And Italians we have also seen have made significant contributions to the development of Los Angeles and California, from the fields of banking and science, agriculture, transportation, entertainment, responsible for such landmarks as the Watts Towers, Gaustivilla, or sorry, Guastivilla Villa, the Venice Canals in Mr. Rosendahl's district, and the Biltmore Hotel. The city of Los Angeles Italian-American community boasts a bountiful history, an unequaled vitality. It adds to the rich cultural diversity of our city and in the Golden State. And the process has made so many remarkable contributions that we can hardly do it justice here today. But as the city of Los Angeles celebrates 150 years of Italian unification, we hereby declare the month of October as Italian American Heritage Month and recognize the significant contributions that Italian Americans have made to the city of Los Angeles, the state of California, and the United States of America. And while we have a larger certificate for the entire day, I also wanted to take this moment to welcome our new Council General, Giuseppe Perone, the new Council General in Italy here in Los Angeles. He follows a great line of Consuls General. He's come to us from Washington, DC, but he's been stationed all around the world, from Algeria to the Foreign Ministry in Rome. And we're very lucky to have somebody of such high stature. And already, just talking to him here, I know he's so excited to be in a real city and get out of Washington, DC. So to the Honorable Giuseppe Perone, we welcome you and celebriamo tutti la contribuzione degli italiani.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric, for this special presentation, for this certificate of welcome and for declaring October Italian Heritage Month. We're very proud of this proclamation. I just arrived in Los Angeles. I've been here for a few weeks, but I can say that I'm very excited because Los Angeles, I'm told, is the third, is the city that hosts the third-largest consular corps and is the second in the US. So for me, it's a real privilege to serve here. And it's also a city where the Italian presence, as you have said, has been longstanding. And actually, also at the official level, Italy has been represented with consular relationships for 110 years. So our first consular agent in Los Angeles was stationed here 110 years ago. So we have a very long history. And we have a long history that has been made also by Italian Americans in the city of Los Angeles. We have a beautiful delegation here of Italian Americans from the Federated, Italo-Americans, from NIAF, all the organizations that make up the Italian, that in which the Italian American presence in Los Angeles is organized. And Italian Americans have given an extraordinary contribution. So you yourself mentioned all these beautiful landmarks that Italian Americans have built in Los Angeles, have left in Los Angeles. I was told just a few minutes ago that the rotunda itself of this very building is modeled after San Vitale in Ravenna. So that's another thing that I was unaware of, but it really reinforces my belief that the Italian presence here is very strong. And I would work, I would love to work with you all with the support of all the Italian Americans to continue to strengthen this presence. We have this beautiful deserving project, which is the construction of the Italian American Museum in historic Little Italy. And here we have all the representatives that are working tirelessly for this, Mariana Gatto, Paul Pagnone. And I do really hope that 2013 will be the year when this, when this new landmark of Italian presence will be opened. You have talked about all the other landmarks. The Watts Towers are an amazing product of Italian ingenuity, Italian creativity, which is a symbol of how Italy and Southern California are close. Are close because of their natural diversity. Italy has a strong regional diversity, but also diversity in natural landscape. So Italy and Southern California should continue to work together. And I would, and I will work with all my energies to achieve this aim, to reinforce our economic, cultural, touristic relationship in these years that I have in front of me in the beautiful city of Los Angeles. So thank you very much. And thanks again to all of you for being here with me representing the country of Italy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council General Perone. And now we have our city attorney Carmen Trutanich to say a few words.
My mom would get real mad at that councilman. I'm very fortunate to have grown up in a part of Los Angeles as growing up was mainly, at the time, Yugoslav and Italian. I actually, my Italian grandparents lived with us, with my parents. I was one of seven children. And I'm very, very proud of my Italian heritage. When I was in my twenties, after I graduated from USC, I had an opportunity to travel to Italy to play volleyball. And I traveled throughout the country and got to see the culture of playing on a team. And I turned 21, and I remember that night to this day, in Italy. Whoever said that the Italians don't know how to party was lying. The Italians are a wonderful culture. It is a, they are steeped in tradition, steeped in family. They are, the entire country is one of the most beautiful places on earth. I, my family hails from a little island off the coast of Naples called Ischia, which is one of the three, that's right, it's the sister city of Los Angeles. And it, I spent almost seven months there, seven to nine months on that island, playing volleyball all over the, all over the country. What a time. And I could tell you this, that, that the Italians' culture in Los Angeles is vibrant, is strong, continues to grow down in my area of the world, down in San Pedro. And making the Italian American Museum part of the central city of Los Angeles recognizes what a melting pot this city actually is. When you look and you see that there's, there's Alvera Street and Chinatown and Koreatown and Little Italy. And 144 different languages are spoken in this city. And then you ask yourself, why is Los Angeles such a great place? The reasons are obvious. There's 144 different reasons why. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Council President Garcetti.
I'd like to ask Mariana Gatto to come forward as well to say some words on this occasion.
Ma na tu sole. Well, on that note, quite literally, on behalf of the Italian American Museum of Los Angeles and the numerous Italian organizations represented here today, including the San Gennaro Foundation, the National Italian American Foundation, the Italian Catholic Federation, and the Federated Italo-Americans, we're happy to be celebrating the sixth annual Italian Heritage Month here in the John Farrow Council Chambers with all of you. As our Council General and Council President Garcetti mentioned, our history as Italians, actually in Los Angeles, predates California statehood. And Italian immigrants played an integral role in the creation of the city that we know today, from the fields of banking and transportation to agriculture, of course Hollywood, and as well as politics. Today, our community numbers over 300,000 in Los Angeles and is the fourth-largest Italian community in the United States. We thank you for recognizing the contributions of our people, both past and present, and look forward to working with you in the future for our shared mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Pagnone. I'm the President of the Italian American Museum of Los Angeles, which is, of course, on Alvera Street. And first of all, I'd like to personally thank Council President, President Garcetti and the entire council for their support of not only our museum, but of Italian...
What is it, sir?
Cultural Heritage Month. And I'd like to thank, thank Carmen Trutanich, our City Council, for his support as well. And of course, welcome and thank Giuseppe Perone for being here today. And as a native Angelino, I just want to say that I really believe the most amazing thing about Los Angeles is its incredible diversity, which our city attorney alluded to. I was born in Chinatown. People often ask me why I was born in Chinatown. But that was at one time part of Little Italy. That's right. And I grew up in the city, and I absolutely love the city. And I look forward to the opening of the museum and becoming a part, our little museum becoming a part of the incredible fabric of different people that have made Los Angeles such an interesting place. So I want to thank you all for helping. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you know, it occurs to me that both in New York and here, there's always been this overlap of Chinatown and Little Italy. So maybe we need to find out a Marco Polo connection for both, and we can bring them together. But thank you very much. I want to present now with our city attorney Carmen Trutanich this official proclamation for Italian American Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles, on behalf of myself, Tom Labange as well. We celebrate, and we hope that all of you will not only take in some culture, but support the ongoing initiatives that we have to make this not only one of the greatest, but the greatest Italian-American cities anywhere in the world. Thank you very much.
Well done. Council Member Rosendahl.
Yes, buongiorno and grazie. Joe Sorrell, may he rest in peace, who was a friend of mine for 40 years, really put the relationship on the map in the politics of this great city. And Joe even went a step further and started putting together the museum and making that happen. So I just want to acknowledge Joe Sorrell at this point for, for all of you here.
Thank you very much. That concludes the presentation for Italian Heritage Month. Thank you so much, Council President Garcetti. Okay, we'll go through the agenda.
Alacon, Cardenas, Englander, Wiesar, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First items on the agenda.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, minutes approved. Moved by Rosendahl, approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, moved by Wiesar, approved.
Items one and two are public convenience in necessity item in Council District Five and ordinance notice for public hearing respectively.
Okay. Council Member Corretts.
On item number one, I move to find the public convenience in necessity and grant the item.
Okay. Those items are before us.
And Mr. President, there are cards on item number two. Do you wish to call it special?
Okay, item number two, called special for cards. So we have item number one before us. Okay. We have item number one before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that item's approved.
Items three through 10 are items which public carings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration. There are cards on items three and five.
Okay. Have we had public comment on item three and five?
No, we haven't.
Okay, so those items three and five will be held for public comment. The rest of the items are before us. Any of the specials on those items, members? Okay, seeing none, okay. Open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those items are approved.
Item number 11 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold this item on the desk?
Yes, we'll hold that item on the desk. And we will go back to presentations.
President, and a second presentation today is really a presentation of this entire council, our city attorney, city controller, our mayor, in which every single year we mark October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And this year, the city of Los Angeles is raising awareness of a resource that has been working to serve victims and survivors of domestic violence since 1994. A group that usually is part of these presentations, a group that usually points out important aspects of domestic violence we must address, but they themselves, who have never been the focus of, of what we do. And we thought it was well-nigh time to honor the actual folks that each of us has appointed around this horseshoe, the Domestic Violence Task Force, as our focus for this year's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is a resource not just for survivors, but a resource for all of us as policymakers. A group of committed activists and individuals who are making the difference of turning around lives and saving lives. This group of community leaders, along with city department leaders, such as those from the Los Angeles Police Department, who we also honor here today, collaborate to provide a plethora of services to women in their darkest hour of need. And let us start by thanking them since 1994 for their incredible service to the people of Los Angeles, the Domestic Violence Task Force. In a moment, I'll introduce Task Force Chair Carol Tantil, who is a leader among leaders, somebody who will be able to introduce the team and describe some of the work that they are doing. But I first want to thank all the LAPD officers who are here today. We see throughout the chambers, literally the finest, not only folks who, who serve, but who literally protect, who come to those situations, violent situations in apartments and homes throughout this city, to be able to take people away from lives of violence and to try to bring them to lives of hope once again. They are working to enforce the law against perpetrators of domestic violence and make sure that we get victims the care and services they need to become survivors. I want to congratulate especially LAPD Detective DeW... I want to congratulate especially LAPD Detective Duana Hubbard for being named the City of Los Angeles Domestic Violence Task Force's Dr. Marjorie Browdy Award winner. And as we know, it was Dr. Marjorie Browdy who started this way back when, somebody whose memory is served by the incredible work that the task force continues to do. But most importantly, this isn't just a moment to mark a month, and it shouldn't just be a month, but it is a moment to raise awareness and to let somebody who is watching Channel 35 right now know, there is help. You can leave, and there is someone waiting to make that possible. You're not alone. If you or anyone you know needs help, needs help, you can call right now the following number, 1-800-799-SAFE. Do it. Please call, and transform your life, and get out of the situation that you're in. People are there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have a new public service announcement that will be airing on Channel 35 that we would like to play now. With input from the Domestic Violence Task Force and support from the National Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, the Children's Institute, one of the great assets of our city and of our nation, has co-created a public awareness campaign highlighting the impact of domestic violence on children and young people. Please help us get the word out by taking the materials that are available here today into your community, or downloading them at Project Youth Safety, that's Project Youth Safety, one word, dot org. Let's go ahead and let's see the video.
Can still hear them. I cover my eyes, but I can still see them. I try to forget, but I still feel scared when I hear them fighting.
Domestic violence is physical, sexual, verbal, and/or emotional abuse. Because your kids matter, break the cycle of violence. Call the National Domestic Violence Hotline today at 1-800-799-SAFE. That's 1-800-799-7233. This message is brought to you by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention.
(speaking Spanish)
I'd now like to introduce Los Angeles, thank you for that. And we know that as that airs, that will be saving lives as well. I'd now like to introduce a leader from the Los Angeles Police Department, a man who will be back here shortly because he is in the last few days of his LAPD career, but somebody who has distinguished himself time and time again, and who is going to say a few words on behalf of the department, a man we've been lucky to serve alongside with Chief David Don.
On behalf of Chief Beck, the Los Angeles Police Department, we thank the city for recognizing the people standing behind me today, the members of the Domestic Violence Task Force who have volunteered their time to help make the city a safer place. Their work over the last 15 years or more has made significant impacts on the community and making our community a safer place. And we also would like to thank, and the chief is very proud, of the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department who are also standing behind me today, who are being recognized for their service, their compassion, their making a difference in the lives of domestic violence victims. I would echo the Council President's comments that there are no reason why an individual should suffer domestic violence in the city of Los Angeles. Every one of our police stations has the capability of connecting them with services in their community. The Police Department is there to help you, not just to make an arrest, but to make sure that the services that victims need to recover from this terrible event is available to them. And so I would urge you to reach out to the police or to any one of these service groups so that you can break this cycle of violence and think about the children, because that's what this is all about. Thank you, Mr. President, for your work.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief Don. And our City Attorney, Carmen Trutanich, joined us as well at the press conference. Our City Attorney's Office has been, this is not an exaggeration, probably the leading local prosecutorial office on domestic violence for decades now. And continuing that tradition is our City Attorney, Carmen Trutanich.
Good morning. I want to reiterate some of the words that I spoke, since we're going to be on Channel 35 and it's going to be broadcast throughout Los Angeles, I want to reiterate some of the words I spoke in the retunda today at the press conference about domestic violence. Domestic violence, as far as women are concerned, it causes more injuries than traffic accidents to women in the city of Los Angeles. That's an amazing thought, as many traffic accidents as there are, domestic violence creates more injuries. If you're in a home where there are domestic violence is taking place, and children witness that, those children are twice as likely as other children to become batterers themselves. Our office reviews about 70,000 cases, files about 70,000 cases a year, what LA Police Department, police reports. 10,000 of those, 10,000 of those are domestic violence cases. This is a serious, serious problem. Safe Passages is an organization that provides support to women and gives them not only a place to stay and creates a place where their children can be safe, but also educates them and gives them life skills. There's hope out there for those who are victims of domestic violence to break the chain. I've talked to a number of survivors, it can be done, it could be done if you just make that phone call and make the report. I promise you this, the City Attorney's Office of Los Angeles is all in. We are all in on the issue of domestic violence. And we will make sure that those cases that we prosecute, and by the way, the 10,000 cases that we handle, our conviction rate is darn near 100%. So those of you who are in homes that feel that you can't break that cycle, if you report it, our conviction rate is damn near 100%. And we will make sure that those people get the care that they need and that you get the care that you need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, City Attorney Trutanich, for your great work. And next, I'd like to ask our Chair of Domestic Violence Task Force, Carol Tantow, to come forward to say some words on behalf of the entire.
We've done this every year since 1998, and today, I would like to take the opportunity to actually put a face on the Domestic Violence Task Force for you. Councilmembers all have appointees to this task force. They come, it's an incredible bunch of people that I work with. And I've asked them to step up today and be recognized and introduce them to you. But because I got the microphone, I'm starting, okay? My name's Carol Tantow, I work for Sojourn Services for battered women and their children. And really, the main reason that I'm here today is because of Chief Don. Because in 1995, when, as some of you may recall, there was a trial involving domestic violence in Los Angeles, that got a lot of airtime, and did a lot to raise consciousness about domestic violence in our city. David Don was the captain at Pacific Division, and I was serving on the Community Police Advisory Board. And our advisory board was talking about how this was an opportunity to look at a community police partnership around the issue of domestic violence. And then Captain Don said, okay, so Carol's in charge. And kind of pushed me off the cliff. And within a few weeks, he actually introduced me to Pat Butler, who is the Executive Director of the agency that I work for. I met Pat in Don's office, and the rest is history. Pat and I still refer to him as our favorite cop, but I guess that's going to end in very shortly. So anyway, right now, I represent Councilman Bill Rosendahl. I was originally appointed by Ruth Galanter, and then Cindy Muzakowski, and I'm still here, so. I would like to have my voting task force members step up so that I can introduce them and tell you who they are and what they do. Sarah Burdine, you represent Denny Zine?
I represent Dennis Zine.
And she chairs our funding.
That is correct, the funding committee.
Okay. Yvette Lozano is with Peace Over Violence, and she is the Secretary of our task force and representing.
Council District 14, formerly alternate for CD 13.
Okay. Debbie Biederman is the Vice Chair of the task force.
Hi.
She works for Jewish Family Services.
And representing Councilmember Tom Labange.
Eve Shidi is from our City Attorney's Office, she has a title that's too long for me to remember.
I'm the Senior Trial Deputy for Domestic Violence Policy. I sit on almost every community area that's relative to domestic violence, and I work for this wonderful man. And we are holding the fort behind the first responders.
Okay, thank you. We have Elliot.
How do you do? My name's Elliot Bernberg, and I represent District 9, very famous lady, Jan Perry. Thank you.
Bernita.
I'm Bernita Walker. I also represent, I'm the alternate, alternate for Councilwoman Jan Perry, and I'm the Executive Director of Project Peacemakers. We administer three of the DART programs in the city of Los Angeles, 77th Division, Newton Division, and Southwest Division.
Patty.
I'm Patty Prickett, I represent Councilman Garcetti. I was appointed originally by Jackie Goldberg, so I've been on this for my entire life, I think. I'm a clinician in private practice, and I also serve as a subject matter expert for the State Licensing Board on domestic violence.
Dolores.
Dolores Spears, I work for AFSCME District Council 36. I represent the clerical and support services employees in the city of Los Angeles, and they too sometimes are the victims of domestic violence. And I was appointed by the honorable and wonderful Herb Wesson.
Adrian. Karen.
Good morning. My name is Adriana Lamar, I am the alternate for Council District 8, Parks, and we represent the Genesee Center. The fearless leader, Ms. Karen Earl, is the Executive Director, she's standing behind me. But Genesee Center has been around for more than 30 years. And the, also, the, one of the original founders of Genesee Center is here, Bernita Walker, as well. So we thank you for allowing us to serve this community. Thank you so much.
Diana Gale. Where's Gale? Okay, she's in front of you. That's all right. Gail Pinkus from District 12. I'm the Executive Director of the Domestic Abuse Center, and currently in Van Nuys, and we started the first DART program in 1994.
Hi, I'm Diane Bartlow, and I'm also an alternate to CD 12, and I'm in the Professor in the Department of Gender and Women's Studies at California State University, North ridge.
Monica.
I'm Detective Monica Quiano, and I am the Domestic Violence Coordinator for the City of Los Angeles Police Department.
I believe we have a few other members of the task force who are here who are not necessarily voting representatives, but who work very hard. Adriana is one, you may recognize her voice, she's on the PSAs you just saw.
Good morning, Adriana Molina with Children's Institute, who has been partnering with all of these different agencies for about 12 years in emergency crisis response and providing treatment services for victims and their children. Happy to be here and contributing, thank you.
Did I miss anybody? Gerald.
Yeah, I'm so short, everyone's right over the top of my head. My name is Gerald Stapleton, and I'm the alternate rep for CD 4, and I represent the Peace Alliance and also the National Organization for Women, and chair of the Children's Committee.
And I forgot to mention that Gale chairs our Law Enforcement Committee as well.
Hi, I'm Deborah Sella, Executive Director of the Center for the Pacific Asian Family. While we are located in 10, 15, and 11 districts, we provide language services for all over the city. We provide domestic violence and sexual assault services in over 30 Asian languages through our hotline and our shelters.
Good morning, everybody, my name is TC Kim, Executive Director for Asian Pacific Women's Center. We've been in service for 18 years, City of L.A., in Council District Number Four. And I'm also currently the Co-Chair for API DV Task Force in Los Angeles County, it's an honor to be here.
And Terry.
Hi, Terry Rose from the Mayor's Office, an honor and a privilege to work with these fine ladies and gentlemen who represent the task force and the agencies that work with the victims of domestic violence. What they do is beyond words, and it's an honor to be here with them.
And last, where is Nadine? She's hiding, okay. Nadine Shimoji is our staff person, she works for the CDD, and is instrumental in keeping our organization moving. And that's it.
Thank you very much, we invite you all to participate in this month, do whatever you can to be a part of it.
Before you depart, Mr. Garcetti, we have, Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words.
Yeah, first of all, Carol Tantow, you're a blessing and a treasure to the 11th District. Also, your work on Abbott Kenny, we thank you very much for your leadership overall. Yesterday was Purple Day in the gay community for bullying. Of course, purple is the purple that we're using again today for violence. And we all know that bullying goes on in the schools, and we know that it's difficult for teachers to deal with it, and it's difficult for the community to deal with it. But the bottom line is, that is part of the mandate of what we're doing when we talk about domestic violence, is the problems that happen to children. And I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that as we go forward with dealing with violence in general. And again, thank you, Carol, for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and I want to give my congratulations and thanks to not only my appointees, but all of the men and women who have worked so hard on this issue for so very many years. It's a testament to your devotion and your passion and your commitment to making our city safer for all children and women and their families.
I would just reminded that there is one of our representatives who isn't here today because she's in Washington working on some VAWA legislation, but our LGBT DV Issues Committee was created at the request of Councilmember Alarcon. And just to let you know, we are ready to be presenting at the Public Safety Committee in, in the coming month, and in November, we are planning to present on the needs assessment that was done by that committee, so terrific progress we've made there.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Our next presentation will be Mr. Rosendahl for Loyola Marymount University Lobby Day. Everybody, put on your hats.
(inaudible)
Is there a purse here, somebody's purse? Somebody leave the purse over here?
All kinds of goodies.
Have you felt?
No, 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 they're going to go to the president, he doesn't know it yet.
Are you going to speak?
Just stand.
Good morning, Madam President. As one group leaves, another group comes in, and it's LMU, 100th anniversary, folks, As you can see, we have alumni here, students here, and people who just love LMU. This is the third time LMU's come before us in the last six months, folks. First was David Bertram, the new president, we introduced him, he's back, doing a great job as president. Second was the development plan, $1.3 billion over the next 20 years, not only does it create jobs, but it continues to uplift all of us who love LMU. Westchester was engaged in those issues, it was a great open process, we approved that unanimously, colleagues, and now we have the third time, which is to celebrate the 100th anniversary of this great institution. Just to give you some stats, because we always hear about UCLA and USC and all of that, but you need to know about this as well. There are 5,797 undergraduates and 1,963 graduates. The ethnicity is across the board, just like our Megalopolis is. In fact, 47% are minorities. In fact, forty-seven percent are minorities. One of the stats I like the most is that seventy-nine percent of the students get some form of financial aid. So it really is diverse and supportive of young people who want a good education. And if you look at the hat, it says, "Learn, Lead, and Serve." So there you go, okay? I got the hat on, folks. It's great. Just to let you know that the faculty awards, Fulbright Scholars, Nobel Prize winners, Pulitzer Prize winners are on the faculty. The faculty research grants and contracts is another two point eight million. The number of full-time faculty is five hundred and seven. The number of endowed undergraduate scholarships is two hundred and one. And like I said earlier, amount contributed to student grants and scholarships frankly is seventy-three point three million dollars. So it's really terrific in its outreach. Loyola Marymount is an incredible institution with a rich tradition in the city of Los Angeles. Based in Westchester, LMU is a world-class university, home to brilliant scholars, dedicated professors, and intelligent, hard-working students. Many programs and classes incorporate Los Angeles politics, healthcare, education, and environmental issues as part of the curriculum. We all know this gentleman right here, okay? Guerrero here. He's been one of the major players with there over the years with the programs he's done and the interaction he does here. From commencement day of two thousand and eleven to commencement day of two thousand and twelve, LMU celebrates year-long in honor of its hundredth anniversary since its inception as Los Angeles College in nineteen eleven. Rooted in the Jesuit tradition, LMU's core mission is to educate the whole person, encourage learning, and promote justice. LMU is a leader in environmental sustainability, constantly making strides to improve the urban ecology of the city of Los Angeles through parks and wetlands restoration, utilizing reclaimed water from the city's Hyperion Treatment Plant. They use the purple pipe, folks, to keep their campus lush and green year-round. LMU has long been a leader in adopting environmentally friendly technologies. Get a load of this. The campus features one of the largest solar electric rooftop systems in the nation, boosting the second-largest number of electric vehicles in U.S. universities. And in nineteen ninety-three, became the first college in California to launch a campus-wide recycling program. Congratulations on that. Fabulous. Now, the new William H. Hannan Library, and I might say Kathleen, was your uncle, right? And she's Chair of the Board of Trustees, by the way. They're terrific. Another five million dollar contribution went to make that library, among other things, happen. And it's great to name it in memory of your uncle. It is a LEED-certified building, and it's recognized as the best in sustainable building practices, thanks to the innovative design and energy-efficient features. LMU students have donated thousands of volunteer service hours to communities throughout Los Angeles. Homelessness is a very serious issue in my district, and LMU students have been actively involved as volunteers with PATH. That's the people assisting the homeless that is working with me, and have actively participated in homeless counts throughout Westchester. The Thomas and Dorothy Levy Center of the Studies of Los Angeles allows students to gain hands-on experience conducting and analyzing exit polls, surveys, and demographic studies. The center's expertise in leadership studies, voting patterns, and diversity research puts LMU on the forefront of understanding the complex city of Los Angeles. Thank you again, Fernando, for your leadership in that. It's truly an honor and a privilege to represent LMU in the Eleventh District and to recognize the university in its hundredth anniversary here in the city of Los Angeles. Can we ask everybody to stand up here that's part of LMU for a second? A great institution. I happen to have two of my deputies with students there. There's John Gregory over there right now and Angelo Yanko. Where's Angelo? He's upstairs, moving around and doing stuff, too. So we have a lot of folks from LMU, working in the government, part of the government, and we really appreciate it. I'd like to introduce my colleague, Ed Reyes, who's gonna say a few words as well.
Well, thank you, Bill, for inviting me to the podium to honor a great institution, not on your district, but in the region. Colleagues, in observing how the faculty works, seeing how they engage the students, and looking at all the bridges they've built over the years, we have true leadership in this great, great city because of the knowledge and the spirit that you learn there at Loyola Marymount University. In meeting with the board at one time, having dinner with them and discussing the issues, it became very clear that their focal point was to create the type of opportunities and to be able to leverage their resources so that students from throughout this country, if not this region, have access to Loyola. And as Council Rosendahl has indicated, substantial support is given to our students to make sure we have a reflection of our society, learning, and becoming leaders in our future. So I want to thank the President, the faculty, all the supporters for their faith, their support, and making sure we have an institution that can teach our youth about the struggles of today. If you see the energy that surrounds this building right now, with the youngsters who are holding on to a sense of faith and hope, given the crisis we are economically, given the sense of, how can I put this, doubt in our institutions, because we are letting them down in many other aspects of their, for their future. But LMU is a place that can instill that spirit, build up that strength, and give them a sense of fortitude so they can advance in the future. And for that, I thank Loyola Marymount University. Thank you very much.
And we have a plaque, and I also have a personal gift, but before we do any of that, I'd like to ask David to come on up and say a few words, the President of LMU. David Bertram. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a real honor to, again, appear before you, Honorable City Council Members. Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl. Thank you, Councilmember Reyes. We have just gone through the initial stages of a strategic planning process on our campus. And the idea is to come up with several key initiatives that will guide us over the next five or ten years so that we can strategically allocate resources, because we can't do everything, especially in this economic environment. And so we have now identified seven key initiatives. And I wanted to tell you that one of those initiatives is engagement with the city of Los Angeles. And the reason that that is so important is that we think, first of all, that our students have transformative experiences when they are out in the community, serving, working with people like you, working in shelters for the homeless, working to better our community. But we also think that our community can benefit from that kind of engagement as well. And so over the next several years, you're gonna hear more and more about some of our initiatives as we, in this area, as we get them operationalized. But I wanted you to know that we take very seriously our citizenship and what we think over there in Westchester is the greatest city in the world. And we truly believe that. And we think it's an incredible resource for our students. And we, in turn, want to be a resource for you as you guide us through the next decade. So thank you very much for acknowledging our centennial celebration. And I look forward, as do the students and the faculty and the staff, in working with each of you as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl, we have a few speakers in the queue. Mr. Alarcon.
Sure. First, let me thank Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Reyes, for bringing this presentation to council. Sometimes we don't think about the ways that different institutions impact our own personal lives, but as I look into the audience, I see my first city supervisor at Personnel, Anna Ortega. She's doing very well in the Housing Department. I see a woman who was in my study group when we were trying to promote as Personnel Analyst in the city of Los Angeles, Gloria Sosa, who is now the Assistant General Manager of Personnel. I see Fernando Guerra. Dr. Guerra has created the Center for the Study of Los Angeles and has provided so much benefit to this city. And of course, my daughter isn't here, but she's probably at a meeting at Public Works because she's the President of Public Works Commission. So, and she graduated from Loyola Law. So this is, this is very much an opportunity for me to say thank you to an institution that has impacted my life personally. But I also want to say that I look forward to working with you as you extend even further with your students, working in the community, because I do believe that there is an exchange and a transformation, if you will, in their lives and how they perceive things. Just last weekend, I was at a conference at LMU on recovery homes. We changed, we did an ordinance in City Council just a few months ago that has changed how they function, and it may eliminate a lot of those opportunities in our communities if we don't do it correctly. But I think it's important for the community to know that Loyola Marymount has hosted their conference for the last, I believe, four or five years. And in doing so, we are able to have better recovery services and homes in the neighborhoods throughout the city of Los Angeles, not causing disruption in the community, but doing the right thing. So I just want to say thank you, mostly as a dad of a Loyola Marymount student, but also as a city councilman who recognizes the tremendous contributions of your students and faculty and administration of Loyola Marymount. Thank you.
Mr. Huizar.
Well, good morning. And I, too, wanted to add my voice on the congratulations on Loyola's centennial and to thank you for the contributions to the city of Los Angeles and to the world, really. Loyola has had an impact in preparing students and professionals to go out into the world and make this a better place. So thank you for your impact. And I've always looked upon Loyola as someone who, a university, an institution, who is integrated with Los Angeles. Looking at your trustees, these are people who are active and involved in a number of ways. They're diverse, and they have, they've been invested in Los Angeles, and they make great ambassadors for Loyola. So I want to thank you for all the university has done and congratulate you on the master plan. As you know, many universities embark on preparing their master plan. Some make it, some don't. It's a huge process, a long process. It's a process that you have to work with the local community to ensure that you remain that good neighbor. And congratulations on that. I know for Mr. Reyes, he helped shepherd through that through Plum and was a huge advocate and supporter, as was your council member, Bill Rosendahl. So congratulations. And President Bertram, I think it's my understanding that you're the first non-Jesuit or the first layperson to lead the university. And so congratulations for that as well. I've met with you a few times, and I think the university has great leadership in its hands right now with you and the board to continue to move it forward into the next hundred years. Congratulations again.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to also congratulate you on the hundred years. And it's really important for people to understand that institutions should be extremely proud of their legacy, especially when they have so many accolades and so much to point to. Yet, at the same time, I think it's really important for us to recognize the current president. I think it's, David, it was really wonderful that the first time you and I sat down and talked, I think we were willing to give each other about twenty minutes, and we actually sat down for much, much longer, because we were talking about real issues of today. We were talking about a university that doesn't discriminate, a university that actually welcomes and admits everybody who wants to learn, who is qualified. And that's something that America really needs to learn about today with all the rhetoric that's going around. Regardless of whatever religion you are, regardless of whatever background you have, regardless of wherever you come in the world, if you really want to learn and you're hunger for it, you have a hunger for it, Loyola Marymount University is a place that says, "Welcome." And I just wanted to thank you for your leadership. And that truly is not only a tradition, but something that hopefully some council a hundred years from now will recognize your efforts and every president for the next hundred years in that spirit. So I just wanted to thank you and welcome you once again to this community of Los Angeles. Keep up the good work. Congratulations.
Mr. Huizar.
Thank you. And for a second round, I forgot to mention, I mentioned how Loyola has impacted the world, but for me, more immediately, my own deputy, Eric Martel, was a Loyola alum, as have several of my other staffers. I have two former staffers who are at the law school right now, so you see the impact of, and influence that Loyola's had in shaping policy for this city. So just wanted to mention my great deputy and how well-prepared he is coming from Loyola. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, round two.
Yes. Now that you mention it, I have a big family, but my sister-in-law, Rosalinda Cardenas, got her bachelor's and master's degree. Her brother got his bachelor's and law degree at Loyola. My point is, you are impacting not only the local community, but communities around the world in a very positive way with quality education. So thank you for affecting my family's life in a positive way.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you very much. And I just wanted to say, before you go on, Mr. Rosendahl, one of my favorite experiences at Loyola is to go to Professor Guerra's class and have the kids line up with their laptops, Googling and asking the most intense questions that I've ever experienced, right there on the spot. He does a fantastic job of teaching young people how to be civically engaged and well-informed and inspired. So thank you to the professor. And there are many fine universities in this city, but today is LMU Day.
That's right. And I'd like to have LMU's head of the student government right now, the students here, Art Flores, say a few words.
Thank you. So my name is Art Flores, and I'm currently a senior undergraduate student at Loyola Marymount University. And as President of the Associated Students of LMU, I just really want to thank you for allowing us to come in here to City Hall today, especially for the other students who could attend. It's truly a unique opportunity, and we are exceptionally thankful. So we often hear Realtors say, "Location, location, location." With that said, LMU cannot be in a better location in Los Angeles. We, as LMU students, love Los Angeles. Los Angeles encourages an education that cultivates an ideal context for study, research, and active engagement. Los Angeles lets us live out our Jesuit mission. Through its culture, we are given an education that allows us to become our own whole person. The endless opportunities that exist within L.A.'s city limits allow us to pursue our faith and promote social justice. Speaking of social justice, the numerous service organizations on LMU's campus commit daily and weekly and monthly and yearly to over a hundred and seventy thousand hours of community service annually, to various service placements throughout Los Angeles, from in the west at Playa del Rey Beach to South Central in the Watts District tutoring, even deep downtown at Midnight Mission, where I know students were there this morning actively serving before I came here today. So clearly, Los Angeles is the location for an education in our nation, and LMU is the location for a Jesuit education. LMU recently reached and surpassed its capital goal for the Right Place, Right Time Campaign. And I would agree that there cannot be a better time to be involved at LMU, especially as a student. And I would also argue that due to LMU's location in Los Angeles, that LMU will remain the right place for all of time due to being in Los Angeles. While other students can't be here today, I would like to, through a video clip, just share a few other sort of short stories of how much they really appreciate LMU being in Los Angeles. Thank you.
It is in the world.
Los Angeles was a little intimidating, but for my first week at LMU, I knew that this is where I wanted to be.
There's art, there's music, there's theater, there's business, you know, and restaurants, everything.
You're a part of the city, but you're also separate from it, so it's the best of both worlds.
Go surfing at the beach, skiing in the mountains, or check out the movie stars in Hollywood. You know, what's great about LMU is it's right in the middle of everything.
One of the things that struck me first about LMU was its unbelievable location. What I love to say, it's a very, very strong college campus, but in the middle of a really large city and a really eclectic community. You're five minutes from the airport, five minutes from the beach, and you have a view that's absolutely breathtaking. So to be able to be here, learning and living simultaneously, is an incredible experience.
I've been to Brazilian restaurants, I've been to Ethiopian restaurants.
LMU has so many different things that help you get out into the big city of L.A. So there's this really cool thing called the Mystery Fest, and they take you anywhere in L.A.
Everything from diverse culture, concerts, the museum scene.
So many opportunities, so many careers, cultures, religions.
Being in Los Angeles is truly an experience of a lifetime. It's everything that you can possibly imagine, all in one beautiful place.
I would without a doubt recommend LMU to any student who's looking for an amazing college experience. It's literally the best school in the entire world.
You know, many of you know that, of course, we all give beautiful certs, and this is a great cert that all of us signed, and it makes a lot of sense to honor a hundredth anniversary. But you also know that But you also know that I bring my eggs in and award different people. Herb Weston got some turkey eggs this morning, and Ed Reyes got a half a dozen eggs. And I just want to give, in a symbolic sense, a half a dozen to you, Mr. President, from my chickens, from my heart to your heart, how much we love you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's get this one over here. Yeah, right here. Okay. Here we go. Okay. All right. Okay, quick, quick, quick. Thank you all very much for coming.
The next presentation is Council District Seven.
Thank you, Mark.
Enjoy your day, everybody.
Yes, sir.
LAPD Foothill Station's 50th anniversary. It seems like such a short span of time, I guess when you're as old as I am, but Foothill Division has actually been around for 50 years. And I can tell you, I can report that crime is down in the northeast San Fernando Valley, in the Foothill Division in particular, and we are doing some innovative and creative So this month marks the 50th anniversary of the station, and it opened its doors on Saturday, September 1st, 1961, in Pacoima, in response to the expansion of the growth of the San Fernando Valley. At the time, Foothill Station was headed by Captain Robert W. Richards with 153 officers assigned, and served 80 square miles, including Granada Hills, Silmar, Pacoima, Sun Valley, Sunland Tahunga, and a horse patrol at Hanson Dam. Now, 50 years later, the LAPD Foothill Station has 233 officers and serves an area of 46 miles, including Pacoima, Arlita, Sun Valley, Sunland Tahunga, and Lake Vitoria. The station is headed by Captain Joseph Hiltner, excuse me, and I'm pleased to say that crime is down for the Foothill area. So let me tell you that burglary is down 28 percent, grand theft auto is down 12 percent, child spousal abuse is down 24 percent. And I don't think that's actually indicative of the dramatic crime reduction that we have seen in that division over the last 10 years, which if you couple that on, you'll see that crime is way down from where it was. Over the years, my office has worked with the station on several projects, including installing security cameras, national night out events, and summer night lights events. Today, we have Captain Hiltner here with us, Sergeant Harold Egger from Community Relations, Senior Lead Officer Adriana Munheya, Senior Lead Officer Richard Krynske, Senior Lead Officer Cedric Ingram, Senior Lead Officer Richard Wall, Officer John Bennett. And we are so proud, I have to say this, Foothill Division has had, there was a particular incident that occurred in Foothill Division just before I took office. In fact, I believe it was in 1992 or '93, I don't remember exactly. But the question that you have to ask yourself as a public official is not whether you have ever made a mistake, but the question is really, how have you reacted when a mistake has occurred? And I can tell you that since that incident occurred, that the Foothill Station has transformed not only the Foothill Station, but the entire Los Angeles Police Department, and it has done so in a way that recognizes the relationship, the true relationship that, excuse me, that a police department must have with its community. And I can tell you, I can report for you, that Foothill Division has made that transformation. It had to, but it did so, and I can tell you, the officers are very keenly aware of what is going on in the community. They're connected to the community, they're connected to the neighborhood council system, they're connected to the neighborhood watch programs, they're connected to the schools, they understand that community and have a very close personal relationship. Indeed, many of the officers in that station grew up in the area. So with that, I want to present Captain Joe Hiltner and say thank you for his leadership and the several captains, particularly since 1993, who transformed Foothill into a station that has the utmost respect in the department, and more importantly, the utmost respect of the community. Captain Hiltner.
Thank you, Councilman Alarcon, for inviting us to this presentation this morning on behalf of the Chief of Police and the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department, and in particular, the men and women of Foothill Area and the proud personnel that are standing behind me. I want to thank everyone for this award, especially the councilmen, of course, for presenting it to us. The councilman touched on some of our accomplishments at Foothill Area, and clearly, those accomplishments are through the partnership that we have with the community. The senior lead officers behind me, the Community Relations Sergeant, have true partnerships with the representatives that they work with in the community. And the 15 percent reduction, and again, I want to reiterate that, we have an over 15 percent reduction in our Part I crime this year-to-date in Foothill Area, and that is a true sign of the commitment that our personnel have in working with the community, making those partnerships work, and the volunteerism. All of those things come together and form for a much safer community that we can all raise our children in, appreciate the fact that we can walk the streets safely. So I want to thank you for the accolades, for the presentation, and it is our proud heritage as Los Angeles police officers to serve the community, and we continue to do that on a daily basis. And the men and women behind me, as well as the men and women that are back at the station working currently, want to thank everyone for their support, and we continue to do the best we can with serving the community. So thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon, before you move on, I'd like to call on Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Kirkorian, and Mr. Englander.
I just felt compelled to rise and say thank you to you. I work with a great captain, Captain Murphy, Captain Reese. There's six divisions in my district, and I get to meet so many great people, but to have you here, another part of the city, well, all one city, but we have like so many different towns and cultures and topography and demographics, but we all are one city. And to have this presentation, to talk about that turnaround is important, and to be able to celebrate this change of attitude, this change of sense of purpose, to define community policing differently today, truly is remarkable. But it happens because of the good spirit that you bring, that sense of commitment to our communities, but more importantly, that we can see each other as human beings, not just badges and uniforms and the stereotypes that come with not being familiar with those that are different, especially environments, communities, and people. And you have a hard job, it's a daily grind, and to be here today, and I know some of us are doing two or three things at one time, but we are listening. It is important for us to celebrate your accomplishments. I want to thank Councilman Alarcon to take a moment and actually have a spotlight on you, and just to say have you hear a genuine thank you from us. And for that, I applaud you for your stamina, and I hope to see many of you succeed and be in future leadership positions for this great city. So congratulations.
Mr. Kirkorian.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the great honor of being able to speak at the 50th anniversary party at the station, and that was another occasion that just reinforced what I already knew as representative of much of Foothill Division, which is that the relationship between this division and the community is incredibly strong. And when you saw all the people there from the neighborhood who were there to celebrate with the men and women of the police department to mark that anniversary, many of whom, as Mr. Alarcon mentioned, many of whom had lived there all their lives, had seen the division grow up over those 50 years, it was really inspiring to see that. And I've known that as a council member in the time that I've been here, in working closely with the senior leads and seeing the relationship that they have with our community. In my own ride-alongs with the gang unit, for example, in Foothill Division, to see the kind of experience that they go through in dealing with a different slice of the community maybe than the senior leads have to deal with on a regular basis, and seeing the compassion and professionalism that the men and women of the Foothill Division have brought to our continuing struggle with the challenges of homelessness and drug abuse in our community. In every respect, I think we've seen that close bond, and I just want to thank you all very, very much for it from the bottom of my heart. It makes a huge difference to my constituents, the work that you do in working so closely with them, and I want to wish you a happy anniversary and many, many more years of great service to our community.
Mr. Englander.
I just love when I see a man in blue. No, I wanted to just thank you guys. This is the best-looking uniform and badge. He says, "What?" You know, as a reserve officer, my wife says that to me all the time, and it's, in fact, I made a joke yesterday, we had the police and fire luncheon, where we recognized our first responders, when we recognized those two heroes that go over and above the call of duty. And she says that to me all the time when I leave the house in uniform, and she says, "I also am more dangerous with a tie on than a gun and a badge." But I wanted to recognize Foothill. I wanted to recognize one of the things that you guys have done that is unlike most of the divisions, is go beyond the call of duty and being proactive, where when I was in the police academy, your reserve coordinators actually showed up to recruit, and I don't know how many council members are aware of this, but when you graduate from the reserve academy, you get to choose which division you want to work in. And Foothill was the only one that showed up for every academy graduating class and tried to recruit reserve officers, because you get free officers at your division. You have one of the largest, not only the largest reserve corps in the city of LA, but one of the happiest, one of the active, most active, with Kennedy and many others that have been participating for so long, and they've been so happy, and I work with a lot of those guys. And there's a reason that you guys have done such a great job, not just with the reserves and utilization of VST and all the volunteers and all the folks that you work with, but you appreciate them. You take the time, not only to appreciate them, but recruit them actively, and I think it speaks volumes for the division. And so joking aside that I say, "Just love a man in blue," I love it when my wife says that to me, because you hear that when you're leaving the house, knowing the only, you have one thing in mind when you leave the house in a uniform and a gun and a badge, and that you want to come home safe, that you know that your spouse, your husband or your wife is at home waiting, and your children, and that you want to come home safe. And you guys have been providing that safety and security for the city of Los Angeles and putting yourselves on the front line, and I appreciate that. I appreciate everything you do. Keep up the good work, and God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just want to thank the men and women who are serving us today, and in memory of all the men and women who have served us over the last 50 years out of this great, great facility called Foothill. And I'm just very proud to have Foothill in my district, the actual station in my district, and also very proud to say that up until the last redrawing of the lines, up until the last redrawing of the lines, I've always lived in Foothill Division's area. I am one block outside the area, but just because I didn't want to stick my two cents in there or what have you, I allowed the department to go ahead and draw the areas, keeping my fingers crossed, and ended up one block outside of it. However, I just wanted to thank you so much for all the service that you give, and believe it or not, I still see the men and women from Foothill driving up and down my street sometimes. I don't know if they're looking out for me specifically or looking for somebody else, but one of the things that I'm very, very proud of, having grown up in Pacoima, little bit of a tough neighborhood, beautiful place to grow up, I'm the youngest of 11 kids, and very, very proud to say that none of my brothers and sisters, nobody from our household ever ended up in the backseat of one of those cars. And I'm very, very proud to say that the only time I'm in one of your cars is because I'm going on a ride-along. And just want to say, you've served the community very, very well, and I just want to thank you so much and let you know that it's obvious that when we have budget time, it's obvious that when it comes to all the issues that we face on this horseshoe, you are tremendously supported. The entire department, every division is supported tremendously by the elected officials by this council. And the main reason is because we do, in fact, have the finest, finest men and women in uniform in the world. So thank you for upholding that, thank you for upholding it for the last 50 years, and we appreciate you for many years going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
By the way, Tony, I thought it was in my district. I have trouble with district lines sometimes, but let me just say, it really is, it really is special, it really is special when you consider that Foothill Division represents all the way to the furthest stretches of Sunland Tahunga, out to Silmar, the hillside communities, equestrian communities, and the diversity that comes along with the northeast San Fernando Valley. They really do an amazing job. So let me present this resolution signed by all the council to Foothill Station, commending them for everything they've done, and we applaud them on their continuous improvement as it moves forward. Congratulations and continued success.
For the next. Thank you very much. Do you want to take a picture? Great. Yeah.
While, Madam President, I just want to say, I'll add to it, before you leave, we're going to get you a nice gold frame from my office.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. And just to give everybody a heads up, we're going to take a quick break because we still have 12 people in the room, and we have an ordinance. It is item number two, we need to take a vote on that. And Mr. Sacks, you might as well start coming forward, because you did pull a speaker card, and people are dispersing from the lectern. So we do have one public speaking card on item number two, so we're going to take a break and go on to item number two, and then we'll go back to finishing the presentations. Our first public speaker will be Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Public Safety Committee report in ordinance, first relative to the application fee for charitable solicit, it's another nickel-and-dime and stuff here again. Charitable Solicitation Information Cards, new news media identification cards, and false alarms, and also revising the entire fee schedule for police permits. You're actually dividing this into two different things, for $300,000 a year. You have another item on your agenda here for the JCPA award grant, which is $296,000 a year. So how is this money, this $300,000, that's going to be used to, in compliance with city financial policies, that recover the full cost of providing such services? Well, what services are provided by the entire fee schedule for police permits? How many services are impacted by this revision, and what is the revision exactly amount to? $300,000 is chicken feed when you're talking about a $7 billion annual city budget and a $200 million deficit. I remember a year, a couple of years ago, when you had the idea to come up with million-dollar ideas, this isn't even one-third of a good idea. You only needed 200 at that time, or 300. So you're nitpicking at the heels of whatever in order to balance a budget or to scrape the bottom of the barrel to come up with funds is just indicative of how little work is actually done by the council.
Thank you very much. But I don't have any other speaker cards, sir. Did you fill out a speaker card?
Yes, I did.
Let's see. What is your name?
Martin Thomas. Public comment, is that what this is? I apologize.
You're on, we're on item two.
My fault. My fault.
All right, thank you. All right, there are no speakers in the queue on this item. So Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, and then tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
All right, thank you very much, and we will go back to presentations. All right, so our next, and also before we go back on item four, it has been requested to go forthwith, forthwith on item four. Now we will go back, we will go to Council District 13 again for our presentation, Larchmont Charter.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and very pleased to welcome students, teachers, and parents from one of my favorite schools in Los Angeles, one that I've been involved with from the outset, the inception, the Larchmont Charter School, which is a dynamic school in the center of our city, in an era where we have a lot of charters that are starting, and they've done a great job. A lot of the charters sometimes skew 99% from one income group or another. And this is one that has been able to actually reflect the true diversity of our city ethnically, class-wise, geographically, and has done, I think, a real model job of what a charter or non-charter school should look like in the city of Los Angeles. And we are here today in recognition of their Earth Day mural. I'd like to, in particular, to recognize Lisa Jones Johnson, who's the coordinator and parent, my dear friend, Brian Johnson, our, and I should say, no relation, in case you couldn't tell, but Brian Johnson, executive director, who has been a great education leader for a long time and a great friend and somebody who is an emerging leader around us in all sorts of great ways. Dolores Patton, our extraordinary principal, Katie Wilson, the art teacher who supervised the mural. And first, let me just thank the students who are promoting a greener Los Angeles through their mural. You should be very proud of your work. Thank you for doing it. And it's important that we teach our children to care for our planet, and Larchmont Charter Schools' efforts are to be commended. I was honored last year, and for all the foodies in the back who are part of this, who we're going to honor in a second, to present a Larchmont Charter School Achievement Award from the city of Los Angeles for their Edible School Yard. Yeah, you heard that right, their Edible School Yard, a program that teaches children how to grow and sustainably grow food right there on the campus. In fact, Alice Waters, the acclaimed kind of local food guru and organic food guru, came there and cooked from the garden there in the heart of Hollywood, the Holly Grove Campus, which for years was part of Holly Grove. Now, I'm delighted to be able to recognize their continued efforts in encouraging eco-literacy in education. And Larchmont Charter faculty and its students and their families truly are an inspiration to our city. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I congratulate you, who's brought back here, on your fabulous Earth Day mural. Can't wait to see what you do next, but let's give a round of applause to Larchmont Charter School for being great and green. I want to give it to you. This is for you. And who wants to speak on behalf? We'll do a picture here. And I'd like to invite Brian Johnson forward to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Council President. It's an honor to stand here in, on behalf of the nearly 900 students at the Larchmont Schools. We believe that we can and should have more public schools that reflect the full diversity of our community, that are academically high-performing, and that work with our community and leaders in our community. It's an honor to receive this honor. Thank you so much.
Short speeches win elections, so that's good. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Mr. Garcetti, if you want to stay up there and do your Food Policy Day presentation?
Sure, sure. So this is the starting of a new tradition. Thank you, colleagues. This is the last of my presentations, but we appreciate everyone's, I was subbing for Mr. Laban on one of them, and we have a Food Day presentation that we'd like to make. There is a revolution happening around us, a revolution in how we get our food and how we eat our food and what that food looks like, in understanding where it comes from, and understanding the city's role in having healthier and better food for all of our residents. You all know Paula Daniels, her extraordinary work when she was on the Public Works Commission, making sure that our city was focused. Glenn Dek, who is behind me, who used to work in my council office, I think probably the first green deputy of any council office way, way back when, and who helped build dozens of new parks, but also started with me the Fresh Food Access Program, which was the city of L.A.'s emphasis on making sure. And we've seen Ms. Perry in her district, we've seen in my own district, and Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weezer, places where people said farmers markets never were, didn't belong, Mr. Parks, I know now in Crenshaw. We've been able to see fresh food and community gardens and farmers markets and school changes happen all around us for all Angelenos, not just for few. So we're proclaiming October 24th in the city of Los Angeles as Food Day in L.A. And on this day, Angelenos will unite to raise awareness about the importance of good nutrition and to advocate for better access to fresh and healthy food. On our city symbol, we see our agricultural past. We see the olives, the oranges, and the grapes that were a part of why this area was settled. And for too long, we've been disconnected from those roots. But we want to have some very concrete goals, reducing obesity and diet-related diseases, supporting our local family farms, and we want to see all communities have access to healthy food. We know that obesity is a real problem in our city, according to a recent survey of high school students. 89% of young people had eaten vegetables less than three servings of vegetables per day within the previous week. And 65% ate fruit or drank 100% fruit juice less than two times per day during the previous week. And we wonder with all the sodas and junk food that's out there, why one in 10 high school students is obese. It's unhealthy for our future and for our city. So Monday's activities are part of a national effort to make healthy, affordable, sustainable food available in all communities. And I want to thank the Los Angeles Food Policy Council for encouraging Angelenos to eat healthier, to adopt those healthy eating habits, to exercise, and to do all the things that will increase our health. And I want to thank Paula Daniels especially, who is leading the way now as a coordinator, bringing together all of our food policies in the city, pushing forward that model and being able to make sure that our partners in places like our school district and the county are along for the ride. So celebrate our Food Day in L.A. this Monday, and I want to present this to Paula and have her say a few words as well. October 24th, Food Day in L.A.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Council President and council members. It is somewhat historic that on Monday we would have the first national food day, and Los Angeles joins many other major cities in declaring so. And as Chair of the Food Policy Council, I stand here representing the 35 Food Policy Council members and the 400 participants of the working group that all join in the movement to bring good food to all Angelenos. And we define good food as food that is healthy, affordable, fair, and sustainably grown, and that means locally grown. And I want to introduce David Binkel, who's the Deputy Director of Food Services for the Los Angeles Unified School District, to say just a couple of words about the changes that they've made in school food there.
Thank you, Paula. My name is Dave Binkel. I'm Deputy Director of Food Services for Los Angeles School District. As you mentioned, I represent the nearly 700,000 schoolchildren on a daily basis that we're providing meals for across Los Angeles County. What we've done is really embraced this Food Day. We've embraced the healthy access to child nutrition and to the healthy meals for our kids across our county and through the city of Los Angeles. With all of your help, we appreciate all of your assistance and support in making these changes. We have impacted in terms of a new school menu this year, really working with locally-sourced providers and purveyors as well as locally-sourced farmers. So we appreciate everything. We will continue to make the efforts for our schoolchildren as well as our nearly 400,000 adult learners on a daily basis. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Okay, thank you very much for a great presentation. We have one more presentation today, and that is with Mr. Alarcon. He has a second presentation. Mr. Alarcon, you're up next.
Council members, we have gone through some transitions with how we provide community services to our community, and we have created the Family Source Center system, which is trying to take the reduced resources we have and, at the same time, provide equivalent or even more services with that system. Well, in order to do that, you have to have some very talented organizations that are working with us to make that happen. Today, I'm here to congratulate several of these same agencies that have provided services throughout the city of Los Angeles, but most notably because they have been honored within the ranks of CDD and the social service providers by scoring as the top performers. They've received four stars in their performance. Now, what that means is that they are providing services with consistency, with, as contracted, but also with quality and doing a great job of helping our communities in the area of job search and in the areas of supportive services and all the multiplicity of needs that our people have with relation to the Family Source Center. So I would like to present these recognitions to three different organizations. First, and I'd like to ask the council members that have these agencies in their family source regions, please join me if you will. First of all, El Nido, which is in my district, and they serve other districts as well, they receive four of four stars on their annual performance evaluation. I'd like to also recommend or commend Centro de Ayuda and the Bradley Milken FSC, Family Source Center. So as you know, two years ago, we revamped the system. These are three of the best. And really, to tell you what that means in greater detail and to make better sense of it than I can, let me, let me introduce Richard Bembel, who will further explain what the significance of this recognition is.
Thank you, Council Member Alarcon, and good morning, council members. Thank you for recognizing the very hard work of our Family Source Centers this morning. Congratulations to El Nido, El Centro de Ayuda, and Bradley Milken Family Source Centers for your recognition as four-star performers. I'm very proud of the, I'm very proud of the accomplishments made by our entire Family Source System. However, these three agencies are being acknowledged not just for their commitment to serve the families most in need, but for going above and beyond their contractual goals. As Council Member Alarcon said, to earn four stars, you not only have to meet your contractual goals, you have to exceed them. And these three agencies have done that, and we're very proud of them. In our first year, the Family Source System served over 50,000 low-income city residents. This represents a 50% increase over the number of city residents served through the previous human services delivery system. A total of $17.3 million was reported as increased family income for program participants. $17.3 million in increased family income. That's quite an achievement. The $17.3 million is comprised of a combination of earned income tax credits, placement into employment, and access to public benefits and other outcomes that generated revenue for program participants. The $17.3 million represents a 96% return on the $18 million Family Source investment. So we're almost getting a dollar-for-dollar return. Close to 3,000 youth experienced increased academic achievement. These youth returned to school, remained in school, or showed progress in reading and math as a result of services provided through the Family Source Centers. In closing, I'd like to thank the members of the Community Action Board and the Commission on Community and Family Services, who serve as the advisory board members to the mayor and city council on issues relating to how community services, block grant dollars, are spent. And of course, thanks to my staff at the Community Development Department, our assistant general managers, Robert Sines, Manny Chavez, and Rhonda Gaston, Lisa Salazar and Abigail Marquez, who oversee the Family Source System, and our regional directors and their teams. They have all worked tirelessly to transition our human services delivery system into a model that is now being recognized as a best practice in our city as well as across the country. Congratulations to all.
Mr. Weezer. Mr. Weezer.
I want to simply thank all the honorees for the wonderful work you do. It's so much needed in this city in particular, too. Where Raoul Estrada and Centro del Pueblo in my district, you know, you feel the presence, you see the good work. And let me tell you, without even looking at the numbers, I knew they would be one of the top performers because you clearly see the impact. And I think what I've seen is they go beyond the call of duty in what is needed in the community, getting creative about creating more support systems and wraparound services for our young people and for the community as a whole. So Raoul, on behalf of your service area, Boyle Heights and other areas that you cover, congratulations. Thank you for your work. I think your organization is doing the great work it does because of your leadership, your involvement, and we look forward to continuing the partnership we have with the city of L.A. because if you weren't there, a lot more, we would lose a lot more of our kids to gangs, to drugs. And a lot more kids now could say that they're a better person, they're contributing back because Centro del Pueblo was there. Thank you so much.
So with that, let me, let me introduce Liz Herrera, who represents the North Valley Family Source Center. She's the Executive Director of El Nido, and she will tell you about the other organizations that are also involved in this coalition.
Thank you so much, Councilman Alarcon, for this recognition, and we are very honored at Nido to be part of the Family Source Center family. It really is a best-practice model. For those of us who've been providing services for at-risk families for many years, we are very grateful to be working in a comprehensive model that is a one-stop center, that is a drop-in center, that is there to meet the comprehensive needs of families in need. And we're fortunate to be leading that effort in Pacoima, working with some outstanding agencies, MEND, Woodcraft Rangers, the Ochuchos Cultural Center, Neighborhood Legal Services, and Pacoima Beautiful. And I just want to acknowledge CDD for their guidance and leadership in implementing this new human service delivery model. They're a great team, and we, we really are just very pleased to be part of the system. Thank you.
And representing the Boyle Heights Family Source Center, we have Raoul Estrada from El Centro de Ayuda.
Thank you. I'll make this quick, and that is that, you know, the Family Source Center, for those of you that are familiar with it, is probably the most comprehensive undertaking that the city has ever taken on in terms of how to best provide services for youth and family. The truth of the matter is, it's been a challenge. I mean, it's been a challenge in making sure that we make the best use of every dollar that we have that goes back and hopefully that goes into the lives of the families that we service. But I also know that it's important to give credit where credit is due. So I really, you know, they're not here today because they're getting ready for our Halloween event, but I really want to compliment our case management team because they're the ones that really get it done. I want to thank the councilman once again for his support throughout the years, you know, whenever we have events and we talk to the councilman, he's always been very supportive. And real quickly, I'm going to put a face on the name of one of the participants. Last week, when we had the con plan meeting, there was a young lady, her name was Patricia, and she came to the mic, and she introduced herself. Hello, my name is Patricia. And she said, "I'm going to speak to you in English because I can, because I just graduated, I just completed my GED exam, and when I started this program, I was unable to speak English. I now can speak English." And she just enrolled in an, in a nursing program. And those are just one of those individuals that came in, was a victim of domestic violence, had no idea, had no direction in terms of what she wanted to do, and as a result of the Family Source Center, now has a career path. And that's just one example of the types of families that we're servicing. So that in mind, I want to also credit and compliment our colleagues because I think this is a joint effort, this is a team effort. Thank you once again.
And representing the Watts area, we have Barbara Piffy?
Piggy.
Piggy? Barbara Piggy, representing the Bradley Milken Barbara Piggy, representing the Bradley Milken Family Source Center in Watts.
I want to say thank you for bringing this up. We appreciate the opportunity to serve. That's it?
We should have more elected officials with quick comments like Miss Piggy. So with that, let me present this to her and thank her for the leadership in the Watts community. Thank you so much. And again, we want to thank Community Development Department for developing this new system in light of the diminished resources. They've done a phenomenal job. I think all of us recognize the tremendous burden that they have, but also, they've handled it with aplomb, and so congratulations to them again.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Now, we will go to item five as a special request. Mr. Sax, you filled out a speaker card, so please come back to the lectern.
That was a correction, by the way. Thank you. Item five refers to DUI program because item two refers to getting $300,000 in revising the police permit issue. Is there any way you could look at with the influx, the continuation of the repeat offenders in DUI? And I know that there was a problem with the red light camera because you weren't getting revenues from the tickets, but is there any way you could look at to put a surcharge on top of whatever DUI fines are mandated by the courts that would really hit offenders in the pocketbook? It's enough. DUI, driving, is not a right that's granted by any constitutional amendment, it's a privilege. And if you want to destroy that privilege by continually drinking and driving and putting the public in danger, if you run into a telephone pole while you're drunk, hey, the pole will take care of itself. But if you hit somebody while you're drunk, that person has got some problems for the rest of their life, and you are just a repeat offender. Pay for it, take it out of their wallet. If they have no other way of understanding the impact that they make, take it out of their wallet twice. No better yet, take it out of their wallet three times, but do something to offend this constant rash of repeat offenders of DUI. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing and take a vote on this item. Please open the roll on item five, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next item called special, please.
Mr. President, we have item three called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Sax, if I come back on item three? All right, he's going to wave on number three. Any council members wishing to speak on item three? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, we have general public comment as well as item 11, which is closed session.
Okay, Martin Thomas, my apologies, general public comment, and thank you for your patience. Martin Thomas is our first speaker and general public comment. After that is Arnold Sax.
Well, it's good to know that anyone can now camp out at City Hall any time for an indefinite period. All it takes is an AFL-CIO-trained Marxist like Mario Brito, you know, the guy who frequents the Little Red House, and the city council who's eager to kiss the ring of Maria Elena DeRazo, the AFL-CIO's godfather and political coronialism and campaign cash. Yeah, cash to your campaigns. Ah, yes, Maria Elena DeRazo, the union treasurer of the AFL-CIO's checkbook in one hand, and your political future in the other. You can see her pictured here, receiving an award from the Democratic Socialists of America. You can see the banner behind her picture says Democratic Socialists of America. The man giving the award, Afsmi's own Jose La Luz, Key Wiki quotes as saying, "La Luz was an active communist in the Communist Party, USA, and initiated and dominated U.S. Peace Council and affiliate of the Soviet Front World Peace Council." Now, even Dennis Zine can't make this stuff up, okay? This is fodder for a Jon Stewart comedy routine after all. You know, a Marxist, a socialist, a communist walk into a bar, except in this case, it's the L.A. City Council. You know, the rest of the joke is really on the citizens and the taxpayers of this city that elected you to follow the law. But a Maria Elena DeRazo has a right to hang out with socialists and communists. I just wish her social time with them didn't cost the citizens so much and the working people of this city so much. And by working people, I mean those that are the 99% that are not in the union and not socialists. In the meantime, the city's inspectors somehow can't see 30 feet outside the window of the city hall, the filthy fountain the Occupy L.A. encampment people are bathing in, or the generator covered with a plastic tarp that is a fire hazard, or the carbon monoxide fumes it gives off to the adjacent tents or electrical wiring and extension cords that pull out at night for their meetings, or the close proximity of the rent of tents lacking proper paths and egress. No, damn the safety of the public and the public treasury. Maria Elena DeRazo's money is all too important to all of you. If someone gets hurt out there, you, the city council, will be to blame. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your patience this morning as well. Arnold Sax is our next speaker. After that is Nina Royal.
Good morning again, Arnold Sax. Yeah, on Wednesday, my public comment, I brought up some facts or some discussion regarding some newspaper articles that appeared in the Daily Breeze, and they were regarding the business tax because of the work you had done on Friday for allowing the 6% benefit for businesses to do local businesses to deal with the city, and you didn't really know what the definition of local was. And so I take exception to the fact that I had to be corrected and the fact that it was mentioned that I should go to committee meetings. Why should I go to committee meetings? Will I get answers in committee meetings? Do you don't get answers in council chambers? The story was, and this is by Mel Kohn from the 16th, or excuse me, by Rick Olive on the 29th, that Lloyd Greif, chairman of the Business Tax Advisory Committee, had examined the city's tax structure for the past 20 months, and he was calling for an end of the gross receipt tax. So after a 20-month investigation or 20-month examination, you still have the gross receipt tax on the books. When is it going to happen to change? But if you want to make corrections, maybe you could correct me on my difficulty in understanding how DWP, two years ago, could make three payments to the city's general fund, and then this past year, make one payment to the city's general fund, but part of it is put over into the new fiscal year. Maybe you could help me understand that. Or maybe you could help me understand, especially with the new project downtown, the stadium that's going to be built, why the, first, who's going to pay for the $340 million that's still owed on the convention center? And why is $340 million still owed on a 40-year-old building? And B, where is the new convention center going to be built? Who owned that property, and why wasn't it developed sooner?
Thank you, sir. Nina Royal is our next speaker. And then after that will be Doug Haynes. Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I want to thank you for honoring our Italian culture here this morning, as well as my Foothill Division Police Department. They're pretty special. The reason why I wanted to speak to you this morning is regarding SB 1818 and council file 11-0404 for 10046, 10056 Samoa Avenue in Tahunga. I took the liberty of presenting you each with a packet this morning so that I wouldn't have to bore you to death with everything I have to say, but I'm hoping that you will take my comments extremely serious, particularly since this project is in the wrong place, in the wrong community, at the wrong time. It's in the middle of a gang injunction neighborhood. It's going to be approximately five stories high, that does not fit the neighborhood, with no yard, no setback on a very extremely narrow street. And apparently, you all let Mayor Vierigosa push you into signing off on $13 million worth of funding for this project sight unseen without it being mitigated by the community, and this is a travesty. They are an unknown developer, unfamiliar with the area, and I'm wondering if anyone knew that they were going to put three and four unit apartments for rent in a building that's in the middle of a gang injunction neighborhood? Who wants to live there? Is this a place for you going to raise children? We've been for 25 years cleaning up that neighborhood that was the worst reporting district in the Foothill Division, and the police will verify this, and now we are going to get rewarded for our hard work of cleaning up this neighborhood, which took over 20 years from bikers and gang bangers to bring in more population. Please take a good look at this, what I gave you, and consider it. Thank you very much.
We have that right here. Thank you, we will take a look at that. Doug Haynes is our next speaker, and John Miller will follow. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much. My name's Doug Haynes, I'm with East Hollywood Neighborhood Council, and I was asked to come down today regarding a vote that the city council took on Wednesday to make East Hollywood the first overripe fence district in the city of Los Angeles. The only problem is that we, as a neighborhood council in my community, were not notified, not only of this vote, but of the proposal. We were first tipped off about this by the city attorney's office Monday evening, Councilman Garcetti, and we had no hint from your staff that it was coming to a vote on Wednesday. I can't think of a better way to divide our community than this proposal. I hope that you'll seriously consider going back to the community on this. I looked at the webcast, I saw that the one person who voiced support for this continually derided the members of my community as wetbacks, repeatedly called them individuals who were criminals and gang members. These are my neighbors. And I think that gives an indication of what you're headed for when you try to divide our community with this proposal. It makes no sense. It also makes no sense, Councilman Garcetti, I'm trying to get your attention on this because you haven't been responding to us.
I'm listening to you, sir.
And our attempts to email you and to fax you and to talk to your staff on this have not been returned. So this is something very important for us. The boundaries of this district were determined not by any input for the community, but by a group of people who are complaining adamantly that they had overzealous code enforcement. That's not my neighborhood, Councilman Garcetti. So we ask that you slow down this process and engage your neighborhood council in the future rather than cutting out of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. And while I can't respond in too much detail under the Brown Act, there's been over a dozen meetings on this. That woman who spoke had no connection to the community, wasn't from the community. In fact, most of the folks who have asked for this are primarily Spanish speakers, but we will continue. That was an initial motion, and I'm sorry, sir, you can't respond under.
I had time on my, and you responded back. I wanted to let you know.
I'm sorry, sir, I haven't finished. If I could, just let me finish. Just really quickly, the boundaries are going to be something very open for discussion. We'll be sure to consult with both neighborhood councils involved. Okay? Thank you very much. John Miller is our next speaker. After that will be Mr. Bobby Cooper.
Good morning. This is my first time in city council. I'm here to, first of all, commend you on the resolution that you passed on October 5th, 090234 SI, in support of Occupy L.A., right outside your door. And I wanted to impress upon you and urge you to take action as you put in your last whereas by, put the responsible banking measure for a final vote to the council by October 28, 2011. That's a week from now, and since this resolution was passed, I'm sure all of you realized how much larger the Occupy movement has grown around the country and around the world. And this resolution, 090234, presents the L.A. City Council with a unique opportunity to be the first elected council, to be the first elected body in the world to take an Occupy. Your resolution was the first step in that, but if you continue and you are able to pass 090234, or make some compromise on it, or put the plan into implementation, then you will be the first elected body in the world to have taken an Occupy suggestion and made it into policy. And I can't tell you how important that would be for you politically and for public policy as a whole. And I, there's always, already been some pretty expansive news media shining light on this really important development, and I hope you understand what a responsibility you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience this morning as well. Sorry, Mr. Bobby Cooper is our next speaker. Is Mr. Cooper here? Okay, if not, we'll close the general public comment. If we can go to the next item called special.
Item number 11, closed session.
Okay, we have a public speaker card on that first. Mr. Sax, if you want to take a minute on that.
Good morning again, Arnold Sax. This lawsuit arises from a Los Angeles Police Department employee's claim of disability The key term here is discrimination. I mean, there was just a story in the downtown news last week about several officers filing cases, discrimination activities directed towards them. You're taking action here to revise, to enlarge the general funds by $300,000. Take some action. We've had so many of these cases of discrimination, of retaliatory issues with the police and the fire department. Stand up and get some backbone and take some cases. You'll be revising the police permit venues for 50 years to pay for these payouts that the city is forced to make under these continued discrimination lawsuits.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. On item 11, Mr. Parks, I know you weren't here at the beginning. Do you want, it is a judgment, so I mean, we can get educated in closed session, but colleagues, there isn't much of a.
The only reason I had it for closed session is the amount of dollars that the council should be aware of, the litigation and liability, that's the only reason. It's a judgment, we have no way to alter it.
Does anybody want that briefing? I know a number have had it already in budget and finance.
We've had it in claims.
And in claims as well.
It's just a matter, they're concerned about the dollar amount.
Okay. If anybody, if nobody moves to go into closed session with it, we can go ahead and take this judgment in open session. Again, this is a judgment, not one that we can decide to appeal, it is done. So let's go ahead and read the amount.
Counsel authorized the state attorney to pay a judgment in the amount of $1,571,500 in attorney fees and costs of $1,588,961.17.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and open the roll on this settlement. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That settlement is approved. Okay? We will forthwith on that, please, without objection. Next order of business.
Counsel has motions for post and referral.
Okay, those are posted and referred.
Clears the desk.
All right, any announcements, colleagues? Any announcements? Yes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, there are two announcements. On Sunday, up in the Pacific Palisades, there's a triathlon. They're going to start swimming, then they're going to get on a bicycle, and then they're going to run. And it's sponsored by the Rotary, the Chamber of Commerce, and the high school there in the Palisades, Palisades High. So if you're interested in that, come on to the Palisades on Sunday and be there. I'll be there at 10 o'clock giving out the awards. Tomorrow, Saturday, Westchester Halloween Town Fair, it's going to be from 11 to 5. You bring the kids in costumes, there's a whole festival activity, it's a carnival, it's a fair, it's a Halloween, all rolled into one. So if you can do it, it's 9100 South Sepulveda in the Paradise Building parking lot. I've been there before, I'll be there again, it's a lot of fun for everybody. So if you have some time and want to be there in Westchester, come on over tomorrow, the 22nd, from 11 to 5. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
Tomorrow, Franklin High School is having their community fair over in Franklin High from 11 to 7. Everybody, come on down and support the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Other announcements for this weekend, colleagues? If not, can I ask everybody to please rise for our adjourning motions? If I could ask everybody in chambers to please rise. Thank you. Colleagues, I'm joined today by Lloyd Greif, who we all know from our business tax advisory Colleagues, I'm joined today by Lloyd Greif, who we all know from our Business Tax Advisory Committee, to adjourn in memory of his mother, Hertha Greif, who passed away on September 4th, 2011, and I ask that we all adjourn in her memory. She passed away peacefully at home, September 4th, 2011. But she was born October 21st, 1913, in Brigens, Austria, a Holocaust survivor, as was her late husband, Emil, a Polish citizen. During World War II, they endured years of living and hiding in Nazi-occupied France and the concentration camps of Auschwitz and Dora Nordhausen. They immigrated to the United States, though, made it here to freedom, survived that war in 1947, and founded Paris Handbag Manufacturing Company, which made women's leather fashion accessories here in downtown Los Angeles, a story that in some ways is only possible here in Los Angeles. After Emil passed away in 1962, Hertha moved to Santa Monica, where she raised her two young sons by working as a cosmetologist and an accountant. Though a beautiful young widow still in her 30s, she channeled all of her energy into her family and never remarried. She raised her boys, she contributed to the community, and she was very proud to have passed the exam to become a naturalized American citizen. Upon her retirement, Hertha repeatedly volunteered as an election day poll worker, served on the federal grand jury that indicted fugitive financier Robert Vesco. Hertha was a kind, generous, and giving person. She loved to dance, especially Viennese waltzes. Her favorites were the Blue Danube and Tales from the Vietnamese Woods by Johann Strauss. And she loved the ocean, which reminded her of her native Bonn and sea. Hertha had incredible life force, she was a fighter and had a strong will to live. She suffered unfortunately a massive stroke six years ago, but then she fully recovered and defied the medical experts, living five years beyond expectation. And for that and much, much more, we are all extremely grateful. She was a hero and an inspiration to her family, and she survived, loved, and will be greatly missed by her sons and their wives, Mark Greif and Anna, Lloyd Greif and Renee, grandchildren Sarah, Eric, Nicholas, Lauren and Benjamin, and great-grandchildren Andrew and Olivia. May she rest in peace. I also ask that we adjourn today in memory of a friend of mine who passed away on October 16th. Kathleen McDermott, aged 67, passed away in her home in Manhattan, New York, surrounded by her loving family and friends. She was the dean of mine at Columbia College and one of the folks who was in charge, among other things, of scholarships and fellowships, and was part of the reason that I was given the incredible opportunity to go study at Oxford. She touched literally thousands of students' lives. She received a nursing degree from St. Clair's Nursing School, New York, and was the first in her class, a BA from Lehman College, New York, summa cum laude Phi Beta Kappa, and an MA and PhD from University of California, Berkeley. She spent years teaching and working in Hong Kong, Wales, Vermont, and England, and recently retired from Columbia University as Assistant Vice President and Director of Global Programs, spending over 21 years in different roles at Columbia, among them being Columbia College's first residential dean and advisor for study abroad and fellowships. Her compassion, her kindness and gentleness, her wisdom were an inspiration for me and for so many. She will be greatly missed, and in lieu of flowers, contributions may be made in her memory to either the Kathleen McDermott Scholarship at Columbia College or the Eleanor and Lou Gehrig MDA ALS Center. Kathleen McDermott, may she rest in peace as well.
President, will we do all members for Mr. Greif?
Absolutely, we'll do all members. Mr. Alarcon.
The 7th Council District is sponsoring a Filipino-American History Month on Saturday, October 22nd, at the Pacoima Neighborhood City Hall at 13520 Van Nuys Boulevard in Pacoima. Should be a lot of fun. We'll have music, entertainment, and food. This event is in partnership with the Phil Am Chamber of Commerce, San Fernando Valley, the SEPA Search to Involve Filipino Americans, the Knights of Columbus from St. Genevieve's Parish, Council 14772, the Filipino Chamber of Commerce, Southern California, and the L.A. Brilliant Lions Club District 4-13, and the Rotary Club of Historic Filipino Town. Everybody's invited this Saturday.
Thank you. Are there adjourning motions? Mr. Carruthers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many of you may know Nancy Dolan from various political and governmental circles, and I ask that we adjourn in memory of her father, William Dolan, who recently passed away at the age of 81. Born in Brooklyn, New York, Mr. Dolan grew up in Massachusetts and was the building and ground supervisor at the Quabog Regional High School in Warren, Massachusetts for many years, and later worked in food services for the Monsoon Developmental Center in Monsoon, Massachusetts for 12 years before retiring in 1992. Most interestingly, he was a United States Army veteran of the Korean War and participated in a secret nuclear testing operation in the Pacific called Ivy. He also participated in and witnessed the first hydrogen bomb test detonation. He was a member of the George Whitefield United Methodist Church in Westbrook Field, Massachusetts, and a member of the Adams-Kony-Frew post 244 American Legion in Westbrook Field. He leaves his wife of 57 years, Jane Dolan, two sons, James and John Dolan, two daughters, Diane Lavalley and Nancy Dolan, one sister, Regina Gardner, seven grandchildren, one great-grandson, and several nieces and nephews.
Thank you. I'd like to be added a second on that. Okay, Mr. Carruthers. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? And colleagues, we'll next be in session, if we can send five and six forthwith as well without objection. And we'll next be in session on Tuesday, that's October 25th, 2011. Thank you all very much. This meeting of Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Courage.